May I have a roll call please? Councilmember Gia?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Lemmons? Mayor Lemmons is here, so we excuse her. Roll call please. Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Are there any city council public comments?
Yes ma'am, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, before we get into the city council, I'm sorry, to public comments, we do have city council public comment updates which we've been doing now. This was from the March 6th, 2018 council meeting, which was our last council meeting here in Progress Plaza. The first resident that spoke was Mr. Ardi, A-R-D-I, and Mr. Ardi, his request was for social media improvements to help promote the businesses. As an after-action report, staff has been in contact with this resident, our public information officer, Mr. Chris Keller, has attempt, is attempting to set up a meeting with this resident to discuss his ideas. The second comment card that we need to reply to was from, submitted from Ms. Sarah Patricia Weesow, and Ms. Patricia Weesow was requesting grants for air purifiers for private homes, and this was in reference to an agenda item that the council heard late last year. So just to, I was asked to bring back a brief oral recap of the presentation that was made at that meeting. So, the item was presented to the city council at the October study succession. It was an extensive presentation that was made. Details about the LA County Health indoor sampling study was given. We mentioned that the city had hired an industrial hygienist to review the county study, and also to research possible air purifiers. The details about these reviews were also given at the council meeting. Then we looked into grant opportunities. We checked with 12 organizations, which included community groups, nonprofits, and foundations, certain organizations that do have grants available. None of these organizations had grants available for air purifiers for indoor use for residential. However, there were grants for institutional use, not residential use, and in fact, we received one of these grants for the Spanning Learning Center. That grant was more for air issues that were related to the port. That's how we got that grant. So whilst staff was not, was directed to not methodically search for grants, we're still keeping our eyes and ears open for any grant opportunities that may arise. So as a result, we recently heard of a new grant program from the state under their cap-and-trade program that could, and I want to emphasize "could," be for air purifiers. So the state is still in development of this program. We're talking to them about this as they come up with the grant guidelines, and again, we don't know if this will be part of the grant program guidelines, but we are definitely keeping our eye on that. So, and that concludes that. Yes, moving on to public comments, we do have one speaker's card tonight. Madam Vice Mayor, it's from Mr. Gerald Serta, and he'd like to discuss concerns about the city. Mr. Serta?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Looks like we skipped the, the flag today. Legislations, do we, are we not doing that every day?
We usually don't put legislations during our city session or break.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council, my name is Gerald. In our, November 2017, a Paramount student was fatal shot in Belle Flora. Paramount Chamber of Commerce sent out a social media request for donations soon after. Instructions mentioned, sending funds to the Paramount Unified School District. Superintendent Dr. Ruth Perez. My question to Chamber of Commerce or representative, whoever may be able to answer this one, how much money was collected? Why not open a bank account under the family name or a GoFundMe account? Those are my questions with Chamber of Commerce. And that was it for that one. And I also wanted to thank the deputies, the fire department, and the EMTs who responded to yesterday's tragic event at the Paramount High School. Would like to thank them all. Thank you. That's it?
Councilmember Gia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 3, Resolution Number 18005, may I have a staff report please?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor and Council. Our first item tonight involves the next step in the construction of our newest water well. As you know, we currently operate three water wells to serve water to our residents and businesses, and believe it or not, our first well opened back in the late 1970s, and our last well opened up in 2015. We've been working on adding a fourth well to our system, and this is at the corner of Garfield and Jackson. Once built, this waters, our water system will be self-sustaining, as we will not need to purchase any water from the Metropolitan Water District. So far, we drilled a well. This happened almost two years ago, and since that time, we've been in the engineering phase of the project. So the next step is the most expensive one, which is purchasing and installing the equipment that will go on the water well. So similar to the previous water well, we are seeking a loan from the state infrastructure bank to get this done. So the resolution before the council of the night would authorize us to apply for this loan, and Chris will handle the item. Chris?
Thank you, John, Madam Vice Mayor and members of the council. As John mentioned, over the past few years, we've been in development of our latest water well, that would be well number 16. And with the addition of this well, it will allow us to increase our overall pumping capacity and provide much-needed redundancy to our existing pumping capabilities, which will allow us to have the capability to meet our annual demand through 100% groundwater. Groundwater, as we've talked about in the past, is the lowest-cost form of drinking water that we provide, and is about half as much the cost as the imported water that we get through Metropolitan Water District. The well, which is located at the northwest corner of Garfield and Jefferson, was drilled last year. We are currently completing the final engineering work for the installation of pumping and water treatment equipment that will be needed for operation of this well. To date, we've spent about $1.8 million on the project, which included property acquisition, preliminary engineering work, and the actual drilling of the well shaft. All of this work was performed using funds from the final bond issue of our former redevelopment agency, and the use of the redevelopment bond funds was only meant to finance the project up to the well-drilling phase of the project. It was intended that the final equipment phase of the project, which is the most expensive phase, would be financed through loans. We are anticipating that the final phase of the project will be ready to bid this summer, and accordingly, we've also begun the process of securing financing that's needed for this final stage. As we did with the construction of well 15 several years ago, the city has approached the state infrastructure bank, which is known as the I-Bank, which is a state agency that provides loans to government agencies for the development of capital projects. The I-Bank provides very competitive terms that are significantly better than privately-available financing that's on the open market. Under the terms being proposed, the city, through our water utility, would borrow $6.7 million. This loan would fund anticipated expenses for construction of the well, necessary construction management services, provision of a contingency fund, which is needed to fund higher-than-anticipated bids, particularly, the bidding climate right now is very competitive, and as a result, most bids are much higher than expected, and also, the recently imposed steel tariffs is also likely to affect prices, as there is a great deal of steel that is used as part of this project. So that also adds to some volatility in the cost. The loan would be for a period of 30 years, and has an initial interest quote of 3.03%. The final rate would be locked in at loan funding, and as an agency with an existing I-Bank loan, as well as a review of the utility's current financials, Paramount has been tentatively pre-approved for the loan. Approval of Resolution Number 18005 tonight will authorize staff to execute the final loan agreement, and is needed prior to final consideration of the loan by the I-Bank board, which is scheduled tentatively for April 24. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chris?
Chris, do we have any obligation to have Metropolitan Water as a standby? Do we have any costs involved with that?
There are some minimal costs. If we don't draw water at all, there's what they call a standby charge that we would pay, but is a fairly minimal charging relative to what we pay for actually drawing imported water. We would also plan to continue to keep that, one thing in the water industry is you want redundancy, redundancy on top of redundancy on top of redundancy. So, the Metropolitan Water District connections would be part of that. If there were mechanical issues, if God forbid there was an earthquake or something, it's another source that we could draw from, and we would continue to keep that in place.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Let me move through the item. Second?
Roll call please. Councilmember Gia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item Number 4, Approval of Agreement to YMCA's Use of City's Facilities for Youth Programming. May I have a staff report please?
Oh yes, Madam Vice Mayor and Council. As you know, we've recently been working with the YMCA to provide recreational services to our residents. The next item is, before you, is an agreement between the city and the Y to expand their services here in town. Currently, the Y is providing youth basketball to our residents, and with city council approval of this agreement, they would also offer swim lessons at Paramount Pool and run a daycare at Progress Plaza East. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dave Johnson, who will handle it. Dave?
Thank you, John. Vice Mayor and council members, again, as John mentioned, we're looking to expand our partnership with the YMCA. We are currently, as you mentioned, contracting for basketball. It's currently underway, it's going to be completed this Saturday, and it's done pretty well. What we're proposing tonight is more of a comprehensive agreement with the YMCA that provides, again, for the basketball, which is existing, using city facilities and any joint-use gymnasiums with the district, and then swim lessons and after-school programming at Plaza East. The proposed YMCA after-school program specifically, so, again, the YMCA used to offer this program in-town. It was an in-town service, it was offered at Paramount Unified School sites, and this occurred around in the early 2000s. With the advent of our STAR program, it kind of pushed the YMCA out, but they currently run an after-school program at their Los Rios Belle Flower site. What we're looking to do is allow the YMCA to come into town to offer their fee-based program. Now, this is a supplement to STAR. We would, we don't see this as a competition to STAR, because again, they're kind of very different programs. Ours is a grant, state grant-funded program, and it has a lot of specific rules. Those rules don't always work for all of our parents, so we would like to see an in-town option, because currently, again, if you participate in the Y, you need to be driven all the way to Belle Flower, so we'd like to see it in-town to make it more convenient to our residents. It would run Monday through Friday, whenever schools available, and we run from about 1:30 PM to 6:00 PM. Those hours will not affect our current uses at that building, which again, it does kind of fill that gap where that building is, tends to be underutilized. It will not affect the mommy-me program, or evening instructional classes, or our weekend rentals. The YMCA swim lesson program, now, they've been doing this with City Belle Flower for a very long time, since 1994. We ourselves have a long history with running mutual swim programs with the Y. We've had, in the past, they used to run through a grant, a mommy-and-me program, they did a Zumba class, and most recently, they did water safety classes, and then all these were run through grants, which is why they ended. What we're looking to do is supplant our city swim program with the Y program. They would run a swimmer, well, our program currently runs with a deficit, so we're not recouping all of our costs, and we see this as a long-term problem with the growth of minimum wage. More importantly, or as equally important, it also transfers potential liability. So now, there's a large agency that would be the primary source if there were ever an incident at the pool. We've never had a major incident, we don't anticipate one, but if there were, this puts another large agency in front of us. The program is almost identical to ours. They run two-week sessions, they're half-hour swim lesson structure, very, again, identical to ours. Their proposed rates that they're looking at are $56 to $65, depending on which level of swim that their kids are participating in. In comparison to ours, for youth, if you're a resident youth, it's $30, non-resident youth $35, residents adult $45, and non-resident adult $50. Now, the YMCA does offer a financial assistance structure, which we do not. That is why we're proposing an additional subsidy to the YMCA. So overall, we're recommending a $25,000 subsidy that the city would provide to YMCA. Now, they're currently receiving $15,000 for, some money from the city. It's $5,000 that they get for Camp Oaks, and they're currently getting $10,000 for the youth basketball program. What we're proposing is increasing that by $10,000 in FY19, which would include then money they could use to subsidize residents who can't afford the swim lesson rates or the after-school programming rates, so they would have the ability to use those funds to assist our residents. We're not changing, requesting any change in FY18, it would be the current allocation of the five for Camp Oaks, the 10 for basketball, but we could come back to for FY19 budget and propose the full 25. We also do have with us the senior executive director of the Los Rios YMCA, Jeremy Eschnau. He is in the audience, if you do have any questions, but we are recommending authorization of this new agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for David?
Yeah, I have one, Dave. With our current thing, we have adults in there, resident and non-resident, and I don't see that with the YMCA. I'm assuming they would still offer that, does that mean that, depending on the swim level that we have for standard bar, that'd be like adults would be a little bit more from the YMCA?
Yeah, actually, Jeremy can answer, but it would include adults. The overall art is that we want them to be able to do youth programming, but we would allow adults for swim lessons. We do that now, we don't get a lot, it's primarily for youth.
Yeah, I understand, but I think there's probably some that do use it.
There are some, yes.
Okay, we still have that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have a question, Dave. So with the YMCA coming in to do the swim lessons, that would mean that the city wouldn't be providing their swim lessons anymore, or are they still two separate?
It would be one entity, the YMCA, that would offer swim lessons at Paramount Pool.
So we're wanting to increase to $25,000, aren't we saving money by not having the city of Paramount fund that anymore?
Correct. Overall, at this point, it would be about $8,000 overall savings for us not running the basketball program and running the swim lessons.
May I have a motion please?
Make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Gia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item Number 5, Installation and Maintenance of Electric Vehicle Charging Stations. May I have a staff report please?
Yes, Vice Mayor and Council. At last month's meeting, you may recall, the city council approved our application requesting grant funding for electric vehicle charging stations. So tonight, we're asking for the council to award a contract to vendor to actually purchase and install these chargers. Though we haven't been notified whether or not we received the grant, we want to be proactive, and we want to have a contract in hand so that we can move forward with the project right when we get word that we receive the grant. So again, we wouldn't enter this contract only if, only if we were to receive the grant, and Chris Casher, Public Works Director, will handle that. Chris?
Thank you, John, Madam Vice Mayor and members of the council. As John mentioned at last month's council meeting, the council had an item that was brought before them to approve an application to the Mobile Source Air Pollution Resource Committee, or MSRC, for participation in the local government partnership program to encourage use of zero near-zero emission vehicles. As was mentioned, the provision of electric vehicle charging stations was one of the eligible projects. And to that end, this evening, we have afforded the council consideration of an award of contract to provide two electric vehicle charging stations, one at City Hall and one at Sheriff's Station. The station at City Hall, we are proposing to locate behind the Clearwater Building in the parking lot area between City Hall and Clearwater. And the charging station at the Sheriff's Station would be along the front parking lot, close to the corner of Somerset and Paramount. The bid we are using is from Voltec Inc., and is what we call a piggyback bid, in that it is a bid that was provided to another agency, which in this case was the city of Santa Ana. And under our purchasing policy, we are allowed to use other agencies' formal bidding results as our own, as long as they are honored by the company in question. The use of piggybacking is often used to shorten our purchase times for projects, while still having the benefits of a competitively bid project. In this particular case, the total proposed bid would be for $50,403, and includes a cost of $40,23 for the procurement and installation of the chargers above City Hall and the station, and $9,580 for a five-year maintenance contract that includes all costs for networking upgrades and as needed maintenance on the charger. Per the MSRC guidelines, the MSRC grant will pay 75% of the cost, and the remaining 25% we can cover using money that is allocated to us by AQMD under the 2766 program. As John mentioned, we also intend not to actually initiate this project until we get confirmation that we have been approved for use of the MSRC funds, which we anticipated April, but after that point, it would be our intent then to go ahead and initiate the project. So with that, we are recommending a ward, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chris?
Hey, Chris, isn't putting an installation behind the Blue Water, isn't that kind of a congested area for people to get in and out? Parking lot's always full, hospital traffic and everything like that.
Yeah, really, our intent, I think, was is that there's a lot of traffic for people going to gateway cities council government offices, from some of the other agencies such as Metro, that actually come in electric vehicles. So the idea of putting it in that location was really to serve a lot of that clientele, as well as the proximity that we place it there was also adjacent to some of the existing electrical infrastructure for the building, and so to kind of keep the cost down a little bit, it was placed in that location so that we wouldn't be having additional costs for running conduit farther out into the parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have, okay, my concern would be, so, that access isn't easy for the public to access, and then the other one being located at the Sheriff's Station isn't going to be friendly access either. So really, this is for who? Not the community?
This is for public use.
But really, it's not.
But it's located on city property, so those are the two big facilities that we have.
I just think the locations are not conducive to the community being able to use them.
Me that goes along with this, that I'm assuming that those parking spaces in front of that would be marked for?
They, they will be. There will be, each of the spots.
Parking basically, I guess we could?
Yeah, it would be for use of the charger.
Right.
Madam Vice Mayor, if it is a council's desire, we could, we could look at other locations within the parking lot, because it does seem to be a concern of a couple council members here tonight. It's not written in stone, we would just have to evaluate the cost of moving it to another location.
This is the first of many chargers that are going to come to the city, so I think at the beginning stages, I'm comfortable with one located at the Sheriff's Station and one at City Hall, so I'm comfortable as it is.
Should we get a consensus to see if we're all comfortable, because I'm not comfortable at the?
As long as they're, they're marked for charging only, I don't have a problem with it.
More access, more access to the community.
Where's the access, is it, do you want access into, in and out, one-way in and out of this station, right?
The station, you come in any of the locations.
You can come in off of Jackson?
For that, that's the, well, it's the parking lot behind City Hall, so yeah, you can come in off of, you can come in off of Jackson around the Colorado, or you can come in off of Civic Center Drive. Again, this one really, I think, in a lot of ways, was meant really to serve a lot of the clientele, COG as well, and so that was part of the consideration. But again, both these stations will provide free charge also, so.
Provide what?
Free, free, yeah, at no charge to be used.
The other thing about this location, Jackson Street is on the north side, so it is in pretty close proximity to say, Dr. Max's Building, the library, more closer to the north gate parking lot as well. So that's another thing that the council can consider in that regard. And Chris, go to the next one, to the Sheriff's Station? So with this one here, Paramount Boulevard's on the right, and Somerset Boulevard's on the bottom. There's access for the public at the bottom driveway, and then there's access for the public on that driveway as well. So, and that's all guest parking there. If, you know, the council wishes, once again, we could look at relocating that within that guest parking lot, but having it close to the intersection of Paramount and Somerset would probably provide the best, you know, look and the best, you know, feels where people can see it.
If I could add, the reason it was set at this particular spot too, is that you want to place your charger where it is somewhat protected, and it was placed on the far side of the parking lot, because it would be, have a wall behind it, so that you don't hit it with the vehicle, and.
How many of these charging stations you think we're going to have in the city? That are going to be, that are going to be free? Just these two?
Free, not, yeah, most, most are not free.
For right now, we are looking at these two, right now it's free. We just have to see the success of the program and gauge whether or not.
This is a growing thing, this is, this is, this is something that's sort of coming, and I think we're just sort of trying to move along with it as people get more and more of these electric vehicles.
The other thing that we learned too, if I may, there is a mobile app that a lot of the drivers of electric vehicle use to locate where the nearest charger is, so if you build it, they will come type of thing. So that's what we've heard from other cities that have put these in.
John, I think just my concern is, these are probably the only two free that we're going to get. If we want our community to start going towards electric vehicles, we have to make it accessible. And in the, in the presentation itself, it says, you know, people that come in from COG and come in from other areas, and at some point, I just think that, you know what, let's do something for the community. And I just think that we can, I mean, I'm all about getting these two electric vehicle locations, but I think we can do better for the community on this one.
Well, it's open to the public. And we will advertise it via our Facebook, via City Media, so.
Right, but we already established that parking is an issue in that area anyway.
But I don't think we're going to have 500 cars in line to charge, so I'm comfortable as it is. Mr. Hoffmeyer, you've heard how the others feel.
How long before you're going to have other stations come to town?
We actually, as part of this project, we started talking with some of the others, a number of private companies that are doing this. Generally, they locate retail shopping centers, and we've talked to a number of those, and in fact, put them in contact with some of the property managers in some of our shopping centers. So I would expect there will be more in the next year or two, just again, as people get more of these, there's sort of a push to get those charging stations in, and it's a moneymaker for some companies.
It's a growing, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion approved. May I have a roll call please? Councilmember Gia?
I'm going to reluctantly vote yes, because I want the charging stations, I'm just not happy with the location, but yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 6, Resolution Number 18007, Upcoming Modification of Fees and Charges for Pickup and Hauling of Refuse for the City of Paramount. May I have a staff report please?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor and Council. The next item is a request, as you mentioned, by Calment to increase trash rates for both residential and commercial accounts. Calment received an increase last March, and there is a provision in their contract to receive a rate increase annually, and this is based on Consumer Price Index, as well as other factors like increases in disposal costs that they incur each year. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Kevin Chung, who will handle the item. Kevin?
Yes, thank you, John, and good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and the city council members. It is that time of year again, and as John mentioned, in the city's contract with Calment Services, there is a provision for an annual rate increase for both residential and commercial customers. The rate increase is negotiated between the city and Calment representatives before the new rate takes effect in April of each year. The city and Calment recently concluded these negotiations, and staff has a rate increase recommendation for your consideration. For background, and to refresh your memory regarding residential accounts, in 2015, the city did not approve an increase with Calment. In 2016, a 2% or 34 cent increase was approved, and in 2017, a 4.8% or 83 cent increase point eight percent or eighty-three cent increase was approved. Typically, these monthly rate increases are based on higher operational costs incurred by Calmet and the Consumer Price Index, or CPI, increases. Also, another significant factor the city takes into consideration is the cost for refuse services as compared with our neighboring cities. Maintaining the competitive trash rate for our residents has always been one of, if not the most important factor, when the city negotiates with Calmet for, for increases. To provide perspective on commercial rates, in 2015, a two percent increase was approved. In 2016, a three percent increase was negotiated, and 2017, a two percent rate increase was given. Again, the increases are largely based on increased operational costs, such as tipping fees and the CPI. For 2018, Calmet originally proposed increases of fifteen point two three percent and four point five eight percent for residential and commercial customers respectively. However, after negotiations, the city and Calmet agreed to increases of three percent for residential accounts and five percent for commercial accounts. For residential accounts, the negotiated three percent hike will result, will result in a fifty-four cent increase. On a monthly basis, the residential rate will increase from eighteen dollars and twelve cents to eighteen dollars and sixty-six cents per month. And as you can see from this table, even with the three percent increase, Paramount's rate for residential customers stays very competitive and is amongst the lowest of rates when compared with various cities. Also, when compared with other Calmet cities, Paramount's residential rate remains almost the lowest, and I say almost, because looking at this table, Cerritos, as of now, is one dollar and six cents lower. However, keep in mind that Cerritos hasn't had a rate increase in the last year due to its new contract with Calmet, and they are expecting to negotiate a rate increase later on this year. And of course, we're not exactly sure what that amount will be negotiated, but we expect that their rate will be closer to Paramount's, if not higher. With commercial accounts, the five percent increase will result in a six dollar and five cent increase for customers with a three-yard bin with one weekly scheduled pickup, and for those with pickups twice per week, the rate increases by ten dollars and nine cents. And for customers with three pickups per week, the commercial rate will go up by fourteen dollars and two cents per week. And as with residential accounts, the new commercial rates will go into effect on April first of this year. And again, for comparison purposes, this chart shows the commercial rates for Paramount and our neighboring cities with customers with one weekly pickup.
Excuse me, Kevin, you said commercial accounts will first of April? What about residential?
Same, same, same. And with this chart, this is commercial rates for two weekly pickups. And finally, this is where Paramount stands compared with other cities for three weekly So to summarize, while the 2018 annual negotiations with Calmet has resulted in rate increases for both residential and commercial customers, the new rates were made relatively low and highly competitive in comparison with other cities in southeast LA County. So staff asks for your approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. And also, Bill Kalpikoff, Calmet's general manager, is also in the audience, and he can help answer questions as well. Thank you.
Any questions for Kevin?
I don't have any questions for Kevin. I don't have any question for Kevin, I just think, you know, that the rate increases, I think they're fair, but I think if you look at what Calmet does for the city of Paramount, how they keep our trash picked up any days, that we have big problems with, I mean, any days that we have outings and stuff like that, like cleanup days and stuff like that, they're right there providing bins for us and everything, so I, I think it's, I think it's very much within reason.
I agree.
So my question was on the comparison, is it compared by the amount of trash? Like, do they take into consideration the amount of trash that Paramount needs to get rid of versus the other cities, or how would the comparison done?
Yeah, there's various analysis that go into it, and the amount of trash is part of it. They do have, you know, they, they do have to dispose of the trash at various locations, and the fees that they pay for taking the trash to these locations, they're called tipping fees, those are the operational costs that I was mentioning. Those operational costs do go up for them, and as a result of that, that's why they ask for increases.
But are those tipping fees going up based on the amount of trash that Paramount is producing, or is it their overall operational cost? Like, if they pick up trash from other cities, or, you know, if they do that, how much do we have to be equated, how much we're actually using, the operational?
Maybe, maybe Bill can better answer the question.
Good evening. It's still kind of early, right? This councilor. So the question is, based on usage for the disposal facilities or the amount of trash that each resident generates?
No, I'm trying, I'm looking at this cost comparison, and when they, when they put this together, I'm wondering, how is it being compared to other cities? So I, I see the price comparison, but when we talk about your cost and tipping fees going up, are those tipping, tipping fees based on an increase in the amount of trash Paramount has, or overall?
Well, it's overall. I mean, each, the comparisons, it's by the city and by single-family residents, so it's, it's listed, whether it's twenty dollars or nineteen dollars per home, and it's based on the amount of tons that each house generates and disposal facility that we utilize.
Are any other cities that you pick up trash for, do they get down to the city of Paramount?
Very little. Most of our, most of our residential waste goes to DART, which is in the city of Downey.
But some of it does come here?
Some, yeah, some, some does, but on the, the most part, because what we did, we negotiated, if you noticed that back in 2015, there was no residential rate increase. That's because we didn't ask for one. What we negotiated with the county sanitation district is we, we went on a contract with them, where it was a put or pay. So if we brought in five thousand ton a month, this, the tipping fee was, was discounted from the gate rate, so we were able to lower our actual cost for disposal, and then we passed that on to the residents of Paramount.
That, that's more like what I'd like to see instead of the increase coming into Paramount, because when you compare Cerritos to Paramount to Lakewood, you know the cost of living or the overall income, you know, there, we can compare to Cerritos or Downey or Lakewood, but our, our medium wage is not what Lakewood and Cerritos have.
No, I, I understand.
I would say that we've been in a contract with you guys, and you do a good job, is what I'm told. The only issue is, I don't like being compared to other cities that, to me, don't reflect what Paramount is, and so if you're going to keep asking for an increase every year because of the year contract, I guess my question would be to Kevin, have we, when was the last time that we looked at a comparison with outside, an outside entity being able to bid on Paramount's trash? Because if it keeps going up, let's face it, the city of Paramount, most people who live here are making fifteen, sixteen, seventeen dollars an hour, and this is a big bill for them, and it's going to keep going up and up and up based on the increases. So I like what you said, that a couple years ago, you did an increase in Paramount.
We did, and, but right now, disposal costs are, they're going on the site. We have landfills that are closing, most of the waste right now is imported to Orange County. The recycling market is, is taking a real bad hit. Right now, we used to average per ton for the, for the blue barrels, we were getting paid fifteen dollars a ton for the recycling. Right now, with the market in China and overseas, I think we're being charged twenty, twenty-two dollars a ton to dispose of it, and it's primarily because of processing, because they can't sell the material anymore. Your aluminum is good, but your, your wastepaper, you're corrugated, there's no demand for it in Asia right now, so the whole market, everything is changing, and we're trying to keep our cost down as low as we possibly can, keep the city clean. I think I gave to Mr. Moreno a few months back, the bulky item pickups that we do right now, 2011, we were doing like a hundred and eighty-four ton a year. 2017, we were six hundred and eighty ton that we collected, and this is all at no charge, and no charge to the residents, no charge to the city. I mean, the tonnage is put into our calculations, but we're not reimbursed for it. Just the disposal cost alone of what we picked up for bulkies last year, I think accounted for about sixty-four cents per month per resident, which we're not passing on. So, I mean, we're doing everything we can, trying to keep the city clean. We just had the, the big cleanup a couple of months ago, which was very successful. It was a large cost that we didn't pass on to the city whatsoever, and like this Saturday, we're going to do the substantially, sustainability fair, which are going to promote recycling and, and just everything that reuse and, and save, so that's, that's what we're here for.
Right, but on the other hand, Paramount has done well as far as medical waste facility coming in, and you're making money off of that, you're making money off of the residents, so I think it goes hand in hand that we're not being charged, but you're making good money off the city of Paramount as well, by, by Paramount.
Well, we're, we're in business, but we also want to be, we're a good partner, and that's, and that's what you want in any business, community type of relationship, too.
Right, so it looks like this has already been negotiated, and I know that everybody wants you, everybody wants to hug you and say goodbye on that line.
I didn't know about that.
But in the future, I'd like to take into that consideration that we have the medical waste service in, that other trash is being dumped into Paramount, and I like the fact that, I don't think, I think there needs to be a few years that Paramount does not see the rate increase based on, so...
Well, it's part of the labor, you know, we're, we're paying our drivers, they're teamsters, so we just negotiated a new contract with them, so they got, they got a dollar increase. We're paying twenty-five, twenty-four an hour, that's straight pay. With the overtime, I think we're closer to forty, which is time and a half, and most of our drivers work fifty, fifty-five hours a week, so they're paid very, very well, and that's, and that's what we're about. I mean, we're, we're not trying to take advantage of anybody, it's a fair day of work and a fair, fair day worth of pay, and that's, and that's our philosophy, and that's, I think, why we've been here in the community and other communities that we service, just because of who we are. We're family-owned, we're not a big corporation that's built with in Houston or Chicago, so someone needs something, they have my cell phone, they can call at any time, twenty-four seven, that's what we're here for.
Thank you, thank you.
I agree. They gave me the, like, it costs you just as much to pick up trash in Paramount as it does the other Cerritos, or if you're, because you got a block.
It's the same, same trucks, but, yeah. And the per, the per pound, per house, Paramount is a little bit higher, but not by much, but it's, and that's, that enters into the picture, too.
Thank you, Bill. May I have a...
Make motion to approve the contract. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Keon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Okay, are there any comments or community reports from council members?
I, I really don't have too much. We had a neighborhood lunch meeting in our neighborhood a week ago, Adrian was there along with Deputy Marquez, and I think they did an excellent job in explaining everything that's going on in our city, so I think it was very helpful. And Tom and I were at the Paramount Youth Softball Association, their kickoff, so they're up and ditching and hitting and sliding the microphone. Anyway, that's all I have.
They also said that they were doing very well, too, with the girls softball, it's good to see it back again.
Okay, any comments from staff?
I have a question. Is this on? Are you guys here, you okay? Anyway, fourteen sixty-nine was heard last Friday, Assembly Bill fourteen sixty-nine down in Diamond Bar, and I along with a couple of community members attended, and fourteen sixty-nine has been continued on hold. I have referenced it in the past, we had some testimony from the metal company and from concerned environmental groups and citizens about, once again, hex chrome, which leads me into John's comments about the filters. What Sarah came up last week and was concerned about the filters is because every time the community member goes down to an AQMD meeting and they hear from the Department of Public Health and other entities about how horrible and how dangerous hexavalent chromium is, and that's why they're looking to change the procedures. So the, the fact that there's a lack of confidence with the three houses that were tested, and even though it was only three houses that were tested, and we don't know how close to these facilities those houses were tested, even one of them had traces of hex chrome, and so when it's posed that, oh, it's not that bad, there were traces of hex chrome, but not enough to cause alarm, when you go down to these AQMD meetings and they're talking about hexavalent chromium, no amount to save. So there are traces that were found in one of three, three houses, when there's fifty-four thousand residents in the city of Paramount, to me, does not lead to a lot of confidence in the findings. So I'm still under the impression that we need to continue to look for grants, to fund filters. The Paramount Community Coalition presented the first filter to a resident family, and they said it makes tremendous difference, and they're agreeing, so that's all I have to say on that.
Any comments from staff?
Uh, no, sir, as I mentioned, we are keeping our eyes and ears open for grants, so as they come up. Just one comment from staff, we do have our sustainability ethical friendly fair that we're trying to get people to, and David Johnson has an update on how many vendors that we have so far, just so that, and we want the community to know, too, so please come on out on Saturday at Civic Center from eleven AM to two PM, right?
Correct, so it'll be at the Civic Center parking lot between City Hall and Clearwater. And it looks like we have about twenty-five vendors there, and again, so if you want me to go, I mean, we, we have Home Depot coming out, they're going to display some things that you can buy from our local Home Depot that are energy-saving or water-saving for the kids, and Discovery Science Center's coming out, the aquarium by the Pacific, to talk about, you know, obviously, issues in terms of, you know, the aquarium, the aquarium's going to talk about anything that we do, make sure that doesn't show up in our oceans to affect our marine life. The Discovery Science Center is going to let the kids do a little planting, we want to encourage, obviously, kids to understand, you know, where their food comes from, and that it should be healthy. We have Friends of the LA River coming out, we have Amigos de los Rios, LA County Sanitation, Calmet, everybody's coming out to give some perspective to our community about how they can recycle, reuse, or do anything to make sure that they can lead a cleaner life in our community.
Okay, at this time, I turn our reading to April third, two thousand eighteen, at six PM at Conference Park.
Thank you for coming out, everyone.